Yes, good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting on Wednesday, April 11th, Stillwater Planning Commission to Order. Before we get started, if I could have or remind everyone to silence all your pagers or telephone, and I'm going to do mine right now so that I remember to. Sure do appreciate it in advance, excuse me. One and only item on the agenda this evening is under land use items for discussion and possible action. It's Neil Rogers, Minor Subdivision, PZ-12-1632, requesting review and approval to divide property addressed as 1716 West Sunset in RSS Residential Single Family Small Lot District into two lots. Complaint regarding the division of property received. And I have Tom here, but I see Patty's in front of me. Good evening Patty.
Good evening. Patty Evans, Special Projects Planner, here to present this minor subdivision for your consideration. Minor subdivisions are normally granted administratively. The reason this minor sub is before you tonight is due to a resolution and some letters received by Development Services requesting or protesting the division of the property. And before I go any farther, I would like to explain the difference between a lot split and a minor subdivision. A lot split is where you divide the land and you have no into unbuildable lots. So you will have an outlot, or you may divide a portion off to combine with another lot or so forth. A minor sub is a division of land where you can divide it up into at least three lots, or a maximum of three lots, as buildable lots. And that's the difference between the two. One's unbuildable lots, one's buildable. The property shown here in the crosshatched area is located on Sunset in College Garden Second Section. The property is zoned RSS, small lot, single family, as is all the area covered by the Westwood Conservation Overlay. The blue areas are zoned public. And this down the middle is a median. This is westbound Sunset, and this is eastbound Sunset on the other side. This is the plat, original plat of this block of College Garden Section, Set in Second Section, with the subject property outlined in red. The property encompassed an original 5,250 square foot lot, shown here in the middle, and half of the lot to the west, and half of the lot to the east, to equal a 10,600 square foot lot. This configuration for this lot has existed since 1950. And I would like to point out that originally there were three lots in here, so you could have had three additional houses in there. But instead, that one lot took two halves to make one lot, built one house. The half lots here were added to the lots on either side of them.
I get, so there's two halves on either side of that, to the western?
Yes. This half here where it says 22 was added to Lot 23. And over here where it says Lot 20, it was added to Lot 19, to make those lots larger, or that parcel larger.
Thank you Patty.
This aerial shows the former 2,400 square foot house that was constructed on the property in 1954. The house was destroyed by fire this year. The owner demolished the house and then sold the property to the applicant. This is a survey that is required for the submittal of a minor subdivision. The red line is the 10,600 square foot lot. The blue line down the middle shows how the applicant wants to divide the property. The requirements to approve a minor subdivision in the RSS zoning district include, number one, both lots have to have street frontage. Number two, the lots have to be 50 foot wide and 100 feet deep, to make a minimum size lot of 5,000 square feet. On the minor subdivision application, both proposed lots have street frontage onto Sunset. Both lots are 50.27 feet wide. The lot line here, on the west, on Track 1, is 105.13 feet, and the east lot line is 105.44, resulting in a 5,292 square foot lot. On Track 2, the west lot line again is 105.44 feet, and the east line is 105.75 feet, creating a 5,308 square foot lot. This is a current photo of the property. As you can see, the remainder of the house has been removed, and the lot has been smoothed out, or leveled out as a part of that demolition process. And the applicant has installed the required erosion control. This black plastic is the erosion control. Staff findings include, number one, the Westwood Conservation Overlay District was approved in July 2011, and provides for additional regulations within the district to address boarding houses and provide a method for compliance of such boarding houses over a period of 10 years. Number two, the Westwood Overlay Ordinance regulates the number of unrelated people in a single dwelling unit to three unless a special occupancy permit was obtained by a certain date. Number three, the Westwood Overlay Ordinance does not regulate subdivisions of property or the appearance or size of a single family structure. And number four, the minor subdivision request does meet all applicable state and local codes. Are there any questions?
You have any questions or comments for Patty? None?
No.
Thank you Patty. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing, and before I do, if I can just have a show of hands of anyone that thinks they would like to speak this evening. For the TV viewers, I see about three or four. What I would like to do before I ask anybody in favor of this minor subdivision to step forward, if we could please stay to the topic of truly discussing a minor subdivision, and just try to keep to that point, and then if we become redundant, it doesn't look like we're going to with three hands. So, anyway, if we could just stay on point on exactly what our task is here this evening to address, I certainly would appreciate it in advance. And again, I welcome any and all your comments. At this time, the public hearing is open, and anyone that would like to come and speak in favor of this minor subdivision, please step forward. Please state your name and address.
I'm Neil Rogers, 208 North Wheeler.
You might pull the mic up a little bit Neil. Thank you very much.
208 North Wheeler, Salasaw, Oklahoma, 74955. I've been referred to as an outside, out of town investor that's coming in to inflict damage on the neighborhood. It's, my daughter's right back there, and she's the problem. She's the whole cause of this. I sent her up here to OSU two years ago, and she got into business college, and she looked at her brochure bill, and she said, Dad, next year, there's going to be me and my sister both up here, and it's going to cost $18,000 to put us in housing. It's a business decision you need to make to build a house up here for your children. I said, great. So I started looking for lots to build houses on, bought one, ended up selling it to somebody else, bought this lot, but in the process spent about probably, what, eight, 10 hours in the development to make sure that I was within my rights to be able to develop this property. I'm a real estate attorney. I'm pretty good at following the law, and I'm pretty good at interpreting the law. And so Tom and everybody up there has been great to help me through the process, to help me understand the city codes. So I filed for this exactly. I had, went through it, had my surveyor come all the way from home to make sure he got it exactly right, because the one I use all the time. At the end of the day, I filed for this, and I just asked, first of all, I just appreciate you guys for coming in a week early, because I want a short rope as far as building houses before August, and so I appreciate you guys so much. But if there's any questions, I'll be here, and if anything, do you have any questions to me before we go any further?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rogers or comments?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of this minor subdivision? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to the minor subdivision?
Good evening. My name is Mark Lambert. I live at 1824 West University. My property is bound by University on the south and Sunset to the north, and strongly believe that the proposed development will have an adverse effect, not just on my property, but the entire neighborhood. The property located at 1716 Sunset is one of the original properties located in a neighborhood that was originally zoned and remains zoned, single family, small lot. The proposed development of this property is not consistent with the original zoning. What is being proposed is more closely, if not entirely, multifamily. Two rental units with a combined quantity of six bedrooms to rent to six unrelated occupants. This is hardly a development for single family. In July of 2011, the City Council unanimously passed Ordinance 3142, of which the stated purpose, and I'm quoting from the ordinance, "to facilitate preservation of an existing single-family residential neighborhood by establishing limitations and special requirements on property uses within said area that are consistent with underlying zoning and original construction thereof." The proposed development is not consistent with the underlying zoning or the original construction. Prior to this proposed development, a once beautiful, single-family home had been constructed on this property. Building two three-bedroom rental properties, rental properties is hardly consistent with the original construction, as the stated purpose of Ordinance 3142. The development being proposed is one that was never intended for this neighborhood. This development further burdens the already overloaded infrastructure of this neighborhood, including water, sewer, and traffic volume. This development will likely include paved parking, which will further worsen the flooding that already exists on Sunset today. I respectfully request that the commission uphold the original zoning intent and enforce the stated purpose of Ordinance 3142 and deny this development. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Lambert? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Stadium commissioners, my name is Richard Buchanan. I live at 417 South Orchard, and have lived there for approximately the last 20 years. The applicant, Commercial Properties Brokerage LLC, Salasaw, Oklahoma, owns a residential site at 1716 West Sunset. It appears from the applicant's survey that the applicant seeks to split the middle lot, Lot 21, into two halves, and add one half to Lot 20, and the other half to Lot 22, which will result in two 50 by 100 building sites identified on the applicant's survey as Tract 1 and 2. The applicant's survey, which was submitted with the application, identifies it as a lot split survey. Now staff is correct in its reading of Code Section 2330, 23-7, which defines minor subdivision, and it defines lot split. But I'm going to have to respectfully differ with staff, because Section 23-7 only defines, it states no requirements. It states neither requirements nor regulations. Section 23-315, which is titled Minor Subdivision, semicolon, Lot Split, and I'm going to emphasize the words, minor subdivision, lot split, appears to me to be the appropriate code section that would govern such an action as being requested. The language in 23-315 in Section B, again referring to minor subdivisions, lot splits, says that no additional buildable tract shall be created by the division of a property. Commissioners, this prohibited result is exactly what the applicant is seeking to achieve. The language surely was incorporated into this section of the city code to prevent what the applicant seeks, to increase the density from a previously established use. If the commission continues to characterize this as a minor subdivision, and likewise deems that the restriction in Section 23315B is inapplicable, then it still runs afoul of other sections of the code. The parcel is zoned RSS, residential, single family, small lot. In Division 3, Residential Districts of Code Section 23137, it spells out the permitted uses of RSS zoning, and Subparagraph 1 says that it will be used for conventional, single family, as a permitted use. We believe that if, if the minor subdivision provisions in 23-7 are allowed to govern the definitions, and the applicant's actions are approved by you, that this will adversely affect the development of adjoining property and is in conflict with other applicable ordinances of the city. That last sentence was a direct quote from Code Section 23-137. Last July, your City Council enacted Ordinance 3142, and a bit later in August, it enacted Ordinance 3148. Those two ordinances created Section 23275, which established regulations that created the Westwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. This was a bold move. It was a bold move by you, it was a bold move by the council. I want to quote you the purpose of the Westwood Overlay. This is out of the ordinance. "To facilitate preservation of an existing, single-family residential neighborhood by establishing limitations and special requirements on property uses within said area." What we believe the applicant intends is to build two three-bedroom houses on the replatted site after the lot split has occurred. This has historically been the site of a one, single-family dwelling. This appears to be an attempt to pervert the city code and to circumvent the boarding house provisions in the overlay, in the overlay district ordinance, by building two houses with six bedrooms, where historically, one house was substantially fewer bedrooms than six existed. Section 23275.4 of the overlay ordinance says that, "Should a requirement set forth in this code division," that is the overlay ordinance, "conflict with another requirement set forth in Chapter 23, then the requirement set forth in this division shall supersede the Chapter 23 requirement to the extent of such inconsistency." I hope that I persuade you that such an inconsistency does exist between what is being applied for and the intent of Ordinance 3142. Commissioners, we, the residents of the Westwood Neighborhood, beg you to make this a failed attempt. When we honor residents of Westwood, we're working with the city to craft the overlay district on more than one occasion. Out-of-town developers, attending our community meetings, made the statement, "We like Stillwater because you don't enforce your code like Enid and Ponca City do. It's a whole lot easier to get around your laws." Please use your rejection of this application as a demonstration that Stillwater is not a frontier town, where outsiders can write in, profiteer, take their profits, and subsequently leave us with an abundance of abandoned ramshackle buildings. If the application is approved by you, I would like to go on record as appealing that decision to the City Council, and in hopes that I would not have to further appeal it to the Board of Adjustment. I'm sorry that you had to come in this evening. I don't exactly understand why, but I've stated my position, and I'm sure that you will do the right thing.
Thank you for your comments. I think we had one other hand that raised. Yes ma'am, please step forward.
Hi, my name is Robin Anderson. I live at 133 South Monticello Drive. I live at the end of the long oval that overlooks both sides of West Sunset Drive. I believe I'm the only one that really gets to see the sunset. It's very beautiful, and last year, a, while I was on vacation, very quickly, a large home was built. I don't know how it was approved. The frontage was very, much shorter than the other homes. It looked like it was a six-bedroom, definitely six cars had been parked there. And it's, it was real, it's a real eyesore. When the house burned down, my husband just said, that's, they're going to make that into, they're going to split it and make it into two little lots. And he was right. The, there's a lot of problems there. The streets have all been changed, so that they have one side parking. That one side of parking is, I know you want to discuss the lot, but there's also a parking issue. These two 50-foot houses that are across the street, 350-foot wide houses, one of them has a homeowner in it, and we don't have problems with parking there. Another one next door has a fellow that lives there, along with several of his roommates, and they have enormous parties. The house across the street from that, the one with the large frontage, about 285 feet, they also have six people living in that house, and they have large parties, huge parties, and a number of their people and guests, and many people park along there at various times during the day. Some days, you'll see it, there won't be, there'll be maybe one or two cars, and then there'll be a huge number of cars there. Definitely moving over into the 1716 lot area, and same with the cars from the other part. This large house had, again, six cars. I've seen parked there in the morning. So I can't imagine how they're going to deal with the parking issues even there, just the parking. If they have a, if they're, I don't know what the frontage is going to be, it's going to be, let's see, I see a setback line of 20 feet, if you have that, and you have a place to park your, you know, the driveway, and then there'll be room for one other car there. There're going to be three people in each one. I don't see how they're going to, they'll have to move over into this area, or they'll have to have a large driveway, because if you have three separate people, you know, a husband and wife, we're constantly, Mike and I have a very, very long driveway, but we, it's very narrow. We have no parking on either side of our street. So if we ever have a guest, they have to park across the street, or we just push all of our cars forward. And a lot of times, there is no parking there. The same with the next-door neighbors. They have two people that live, three people live in that house, two of them park in the driveway and swap out, and then the other one parks in front of this 1710. So where are they going to park? If they have three people in there, three separate people, where are they going to park? They're going to be parking in the other people's areas, and there's no room. It's, along with the loss, the beauty of the area, I'm concerned about what they're going to be putting in there. They're going to be, they're looking for something cheap, obviously, for their daughter to stay in, or daughters to stay in. And so I, I'm assuming, but I don't know, that they're going to not put, you know, they're not going to build homes there, they're going to just build whatever it is that would be the best interest for their financial gain. So it is feeling less and less as I watch different lots in the area being absorbed by this behavior. It's very sad to watch a beautiful neighborhood being destroyed. Is there any other questions?
Any questions for Ms. Anderson?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. I think we've exhausted. Anybody else in the audience like to speak in opposition? I'm sorry, we didn't say, we didn't reserve or you didn't ask, so I apologize, we'll have to, we're already on the opposition. Yeah, thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
The alternatives are, number one, accept staff findings and approve the minor subdivision request based upon compliance of the subdivision with local codes. Or number two, find that the minor subdivision does not comply with the local codes and deny the minor subdivision. Do you have any other questions?
Do you have any questions for Patty?
I do.
Okay. Joe's got one.
Some of these are, so as I drove by there today, is the street directly in front of the lot, is that a one-way between the divided park deal?
Uh, yes.
I shouldn't say this publicly, but as I was mentally absorbed in reviewing the situation, I believe I was going the wrong way on that one.
Yes, going back to this, this map here, that blue area is a median. The westbound lane is on the north side of that median, and the eastbound lane is on the south side of that median. So yes, it's a divided road.
I broke the law today.
We won't tell on you, Joe.
I think that's all.
That's all, okay.
Patty, I'll just, I'll just clarify. Could I, could I see your alternatives up there, please, one more time? I think what we've got before us this evening, or at least the way that I see it, I just want to ask you a couple of questions, is a minor subdivision. And from what I read, they meet all requirements of city code and state ordinance on a minor subdivision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And when they speak of houses, if we're referring to Ordinance 3142, and they built two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and they built two homes there, they would still be single-family homes and they would be governed by our single-family small lot code and requirements. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so a rental unit is still a single-family house. It's the use.
Right.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, he could rent it to a family and that's a single-family residential. He could, he could rent it to three unrelated people and that would still be a single family.
So the request before us, again, the way you see it, is just a minor subdivision and all requirements are met by local code and state?
Yes.
Any questions for Patty before we let her go? I just wanted to clarify that for me. Thank you. Thanks, Patty. Discussion or comment, commissioners?
Well, I guess I'd kind of like to wade in, understand the neighborhood's position. I know there was a lot of hard work put into that overlay district. I feel like maybe with this item in particular, that in looking at that ordinance, that I, I can't find where that overlay district ordinance would prevent this minor, this minor subdivision from happening. It meets all the, all the state and local codes for minor sub. It's going to be two, from what I understand, single-family homes. I don't know that any of us know what the applicant, it sounds like he's going to put his daughters in one of them. He may be planning to sell the other one. I mean, I, I don't know that that's for us, especially this body, to determine. The way I see it, he meets all the, all the requirements, the lots are large enough, it is the underlying zoning of RSS. And, you know, again, understand the neighborhood's concerns, but I think a few of these items, as in how the buildings look, those kind of things, should be handled with covenants, restrictive covenants, which I don't think there are any for that, that area. You know, as far as a house looks or that kind of thing is what we normally see in a, in a set of restrictive covenants. So, you know, with that being said, I don't feel personally that we can deny this request.
I have a different observation.
Okay.
If you look at the ordinance in question, ordinance 3142, Section 23-275.3, purpose. The purpose of this ordinance was to set up a special overlay district to preserve the existing, single-family residential neighborhood. In my opinion, taking a lot-split and taking lots of certain sizes and putting them into lots that are significantly smaller does not fulfill the purpose of this overlay district. Therefore, I am against this lot-split. And I believe it's in violation, minor subdivision. I'm against this minor subdivision and I believe it's a violation of this ordinance passed by the city council.
I'd have to probably agree with Dusty and Becky on that. As a, as a builder, if I bought that lot and I built two spec houses there, I could sell those to anybody. They might buy those as a rental unit if it meets the three-bedroom criteria that we set out in July and set in here and set the criteria for. Then I can't tell that person that might purchase that house, "You can't rent this." Now, like Dusty said, we don't know what the applicant plans on doing. I mean, I think everyone in here, we're not naive. I think we have a decent idea that it's probably going to be rental property. But I think it's hard, especially as commissioners, to say and project on what the use of that property is going to be. If I, as a personal, if I, as an investor, wanted to buy that to build two same, single-family houses, I may plan on a family living there. And again, just like Dusty said, it's not to take away from, not what you guys want to hear, but not to take away the effort and the time. I know you guys have put a ton of time into this overlay district and you've thought about it and you've worked on it. And I appreciate the effort you've put forth into stewarding. I just feel as a commission that it meets all the criteria.
Go ahead, Joe.
I'm the new kid up here, so. Pretty soon I won't be able to use this, but I was not on this commission even when the Westwood situation came forward and whatnot. I've really stewed on this. This stuff's pretty hard. You kind of have to look at the rights of all sides of it and, and you can't really judge on what the intent was of the council in the deal. And in a way, you could step back from this and say, well, if the intent of council was to follow this specific situation, you know, that intent kept high-rises from being built. It kept large apartment things from being built. So there's definitely good things that happened. But maybe you could step back from it and say they didn't go far enough because I think, in the way I kind of read this, our hands are somewhat tied by code, the way I read it. And I, as far as whether it's a subdivision, minor subdivision, or a lot-split, I don't think it matters who referred to that when they did the application. It's what it kind of truly is. And in my new understanding of this particular process, I do think that we're almost kind of infringing on the, you know, if you look at the lots of all the other sizes of the lots around that particular place, they're the same size in that scenario. So it's whether or not they have the right to do the, the minor subdivision thing like that. And, you know, I hate it because I'm from small-town America and I get it. I get what Westwood's doing. I have a son in that district with a property in that. I don't know if that is a recusing factor. I wouldn't think so in a little town like this. But, but this is tough stuff, guys, and we're really trying to do the right thing. And, and there are other avenues that have more leeway, in my opinion, to, to, to look at this situation differently. But the way that I view this and the rights of all parties involved, I don't think personally that I see that we can deny it in that sense. But that's my take from the new guy.
Thank you, Joe, for those comments. I'm going to agree with Joe and I'll just hopefully take out a little emotion off of this. We did come to a special meeting. A minor subdivision, I've always said, by this body, we go by a strict meaning of black and white and we follow code. And code is not in, it's not necessarily intent. It is in black and white. And I am going to agree with Dusty that in the ordinance of Westwood, I could not find where it upheld any thing that would be lacking of accepting a minor subdivision. Didn't mean I didn't try and I didn't read it four times. I read it four times, by the way. So anyway, with that in mind, Chair will entertain the thought of a motion.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept staff's findings and approve the minor subdivision request based upon compliance of the subdivision with local codes.
Second.
Please vote. That minor subdivision does pass this evening, four to one. With that in mind, nothing else on the agenda this evening. Chair would entertain the thought of adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Two seconds.
And we are adjourned.